I call our meeting to order. It is six thirty-six? Thirty-three. Six thirty-three. Do we have any agenda additions or deletions this evening?
No, we don't.
Okay. There's no additions or deletions. So we have the minutes from both September 2nd and from August 18th.
I move we accept the August 18th minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Please look them over. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from August 18th?
Aye.
Aye.
So you guys have to do the [inaudible 00:07:57]. I wasn't there.
Ah, okay.
I move to approve the September 2nd minutes of the select board.
I'll second that.
Okay. Let's look them over.
Aye.
Aye, Cecile.
Aye, Cecile. All those in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Aye.
We are on to the pay orders as of September 16th, 2025. Do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the pay orders to be paid.
Second.
Okay. Please look them over. All those in favor of accepting the pay orders?
Aye.
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 Okay. So we do not have a road commissioner?
No.
And it does not seem we have anything under that heading? Okay. Moving on.
Is Phil coming back?
He...
What?
I mean, if... We haven't had a road commissioner report for a while.
For the last three meetings.
Yeah.
I just saw him. He's bringing home a tractor to do the mowing. So he's working, even though we don't see him. He's out there with his nose to the grindstone.
And so our honorable mentions go to Julie Sharon for an outstanding job as Wallingford Town Clerk and Treasurer. Good luck in your retirement, Julie.
Here, here.
Do we have public?
Pardon me?
Are you public comments?
No. I'm a public guest.
Okay. Any public comments?
Oh. One is, it's lovely of you to be in East Wallingford. But in the agenda, there's no address. It just says the firehouse. Very few of us have probably been to a meeting here. I think there were some people down at the Masonic Hall. I went down the road. I knew that it was supposed to be 5988. Then I came up. I walked all the way around the building. I saw the [inaudible 00:11:11].
Come in.
Yeah.
Come on in.
And I had sent out a notice to several people. And it just would be helpful.
Yes. Hello, welcome. Yes.
Anyway, all of that to say, thank you for doing this. I'm delighted.
I actually had to go to Google before I drove here to make sure I was going to the right location.
Right. And there are two loca... If you notice in Google, there are two firehouse locations.
It actually only gave me this one.
Okay.
So I looked out.
There are two.
Okay.
And...
They probably still have the old one down by the church.
Yeah.
That's probably what it was.
And actually, I... When I first came up here, I didn't come up far enough to see the cars. And I went down and around. And I thought to myself, well, maybe that, maybe it's down there. Or this is the car's home.
Oh, okay.
No, you're not the only one who made that mistake this evening.
I did.
It's one, sometimes an old knowledge. It's not always a good thing. But anyway, just lovely to have you here. And I think it's a wonderful presence. But I think that even like at the post office, on that sign, if there had been a notice. I talked to some people this morning while I was there. I've been, you know, trying to draw up some...
So it would be nice to have a notice with the address attached.
Pardon me?
It would be nice to have a notice with the address attached.
Exactly. Exactly. And even a map to come up, to come all the way up.
Yeah.
Some people thought that it was at the Masonic Hall. But there was no meeting place. I have no idea what I'm talking about. But they just told me that down there.
It's actually good visibility for the fire department, too.
Exactly.
Yes. So that everyone in East Wallingford knows where the station is?
Show off their new truck.
Yeah.
Yes.
And I think it's a real public service up for you all to work, to be... I mean, it's that much further before the home in the dark.
It's a nice ride.
Yes, it is. It's a beautiful ride.
And unfortunately, our East Wallingford Select Board member Carolyn Barant couldn't come to this meeting tonight, so...
Which makes it [inaudible 00:19:11]. But it's lovely that we have someone, so I'd say...
Yes.
Yes. Yep. So welcome. Any other public comments? We're in public comments and...
Is that what you're doing right now?
Yes.
So you can hear my name?
Name?
Oh, name, please.
Sandy Bruno.
Okay.
I was just curious. Why are the roadsides not getting mowed anymore? I mean, with the mowing machine, not with that chopper thing that they're using?
They're all broken. They broke. And...
There's nothing in the budget to get a civil barrow and mortar and tractor?
The road commissioner has the tractor. Actually, he's got five tractors. And four of them don't work. And the one he started with over at Hartsburg and West Hill Road, that broke. And so I saw him when I was coming back, coming here. He's got another tractor. And he's gonna put the cutter barrow on it. And he has somebody to mow. And that should happen this week.
All right. Because up here, the sides of the roads haven't been mowed for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
And now the brush...
Brush is going in there.
I mean, if they would mow the side of the roads every year, we wouldn't get the brush.
Right.
And now they're having to take that thing and get the brush out of the way.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's really creeping in. The other question I have is, why is that grader sitting idle all the time over on Johnson Mall Road instead of being used?
Well, there's a reason for it.
We can ask.
It's not because they're wasting it or anything like that.
No, no, I know that. But I'm just saying, they haven't graded Fieldstone Way. They haven't graded [inaudible 00:20:57].
They're gonna be grading over here.
But we will ask.
And Sugar Hill Road is like washboards.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah. I'm just thinking...
So is that our grader over on Johnson Mall Road?
I didn't see it. But...
It was there the other day. Now, I didn't go by there today.
Okay.
And I'm thinking, there's a lot of money sitting there that should be...
No, I think they... They weren't leaving it idle. It was there for a reason. A part of their logistics to get things done.
But we can ask and see what's going on with that.
Instead of driving it back, they knew they were gonna use it the next day. They may have left it there.
And Sandy, this problem with, just to get off the grader for a minute, sorry about that. But on the mowing, we have been over this mowing issue all summer long. At every single meeting, we've been talking about how are we gonna get the roadside mowing? We even went out, we tried to find services that would do it.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. If they don't have someone, come to town and forge a contractor or something.
We couldn't find anyone to do it.
Isn't that awful?
Couldn't find anyone to do it. We have searched and searched and searched for roadside mowing this summer. And it's been like impossible to get.
It's not just East Wallingford people heading out 140 towards 10ths.
Yeah, all of it.
East Street, all of it.
They did mow that.
They did, yes.
140. And then the tractor broke.
Yeah.
And so we're thinking more of buying new equipment.
Sometimes you better bite the bullet and just do that. You're further ahead.
Yeah. Yeah. I just saw the tractor.
And also Phil Baker has said that his company can come and do roadside mowing for us.
Yeah.
I'm sure he did.
Yeah.
Mr. Baker?
Yep.
I just don't [inaudible 00:22:32].
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. No, I just am thinking, John Squires used to go around every year. He even would get off the tractor with a...
He's done some of that this year, too.
Okay. With his trimmer and turn the banks that he couldn't get to with the tractor.
Right.
I mean, you know, that's a little much.
John Squire did that again this year.
Well, that was a state... You mean on...
No, no. John Squire would go around up here.
Oh, John.
All over Sugar Hill and everything with a little tractor and a circle barrow.
He's volunteer.
Every year.
I guess he hasn't done it this year, but he has done it in other...
He did it this year.
Oh, did he do it up here?
Yeah, he's been on our [inaudible 00:23:00]. On mention a few times.
Yes. He has been around a little bit. I guess not around here, but...
He used to work for the town.
Yeah, I know he did.
And I said, "Well, John, why are you doing this?" He said, "I've got nothing else to do." So we sent him some money for gas, you know, and appreciation.
Yep.
So the tractors that Phil uses, are those... Are they part of his company or are they the town's?
His own.
His own.
He was on motor scooter.
So they don't... So the town, we don't have a tractor that's dedicated to that?
No. We used to, and it broke down. And we just started...
And that's part of our discussion.
We need his name, too.
Well, what can we put somebody in a program schooling to operate the grader?
What is your name? What is your name?
Kevin Bruno.
Okay. Thanks, Kevin.
So did you what?
And what was it?
For, to teach someone how to operate the grader.
And they've actually gone...
Because they're quite a complex piece of equipment.
Yeah. We can definitely...
Yeah. They've done the schooling.
Throw them the suggestion box.
I could tell when Tom Colber did it.
Tom, yeah.
Yeah.
These roads were never so good.
Yeah.
As when Tom and old Bill [inaudible 00:23:59].
I think, I think...
And it's like, they grade and they leave dirt gurnrils.
Yeah. No, Tom...
And it's like, so where's the water going to go?
He used to put one tire in the front, in the ditch. And then he took the blade and cut that all off.
And brought it...
And brought it on there. And so it was just...
These roads are like this now and not like this. The water comes down off.
So it becomes a pool.
No. It makes a trench.
That's what I mean.
They bring in Phil, lay the stone and stuff down, smooth it out. But they don't bring anything up. So the next time we get a hard rain, it just makes a trench.
You end up with trenches.
Yeah. You need to lower the sides and build the middle.
So lower sides.
Yeah. Tom Colber did an excellent job grading. Yep. Yeah. And so that's what he was asking.
Okay.
Is there schooling or something for...
Sensory wipers.
Yeah, for...
Tom could teach you, but he's gone.
Yeah, I know.
Philip is probably good. He's gotta teach Steve a little bit more about that. And I would say getting that lip off the edge of the road is key.
We all laugh. It's like, oh, yeah, they put their gurnrils on.
And you really gotta go deeper, especially with these potholes. You know, you have to get that up and then smooth it out.
If you drive around here, all the roads go like this. Yeah. Tom had them like this.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We'll look into it.
The trouble is, the old guys are all gone.
Yeah.
Because over time, when they're done, it's right. They last longer. Yes, they do.
Oh, yeah.
Because now they grade within two weeks. Like, go up in Ramville Road. Oh, my gosh, you'll rattle your teeth out your head.
Okay.
It's so rough. Sugar Hill's rough.
Doesn't help when the kids go out on their three-wheelers and do donuts. That's, you know...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We are moving on to our next item, which is the Wallingford Fire Department coin drop request. So you can see this is a request for Sunday, October 12th. Oh, actually, sorry about that. Saturday, October 11th. The rain date is Sunday, October 12th. They'll set up at 7:30 in the morning and they'll be done by 3:00.
Help me with history. Do any other groups do this?
Rotary does.
Rotary.
Rotary.
Rotary and the fire department.
Yeah.
And the fire department.
That's, that's it.
So how many times a year does it normally happen?
I think the fire department does it during foliage.
Yes.
And Rotary...
They haven't done one this year.
I don't know exactly when they do that.
I don't think Rotary's done one this year. I don't think Rotary's done one this year.
Oh, well, then you're gonna...
But I think the fire department does it once?
Yeah.
Only, they only do it once a year.
And did you say that they had a trouble coming to the meeting about asking about this?
They couldn't get over to East Wallingford for this meeting.
They didn't wanna come over here because it was a different firehouse? It was too far?
East Wallingford's a long ways away from Wallingford, you know?
Five, 10 minutes.
Yeah. Just a block of ways away.
Actually, 6.7 miles from my house.
I remember when my dad was road commissioner, he would, we would get so much snow. He'd leave here on his snowmobile to get to the town garage. That's the only way he could get the tractor along.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because he was road commissioner for years.
Yeah.
Back when we had snow.
A lot.
Well, it's that elevation difference, right? When you get over East Street, it's a whole different world out here.
There's a line.
Yep.
Bear Mountain Road.
Bear Mountain Road, yeah.
That's where the line is.
Yep.
Yeah.
So do we approve the request?
I move we approve.
Do we need a motion?
The coin drop.
I'll second it if we need a motion.
I think we can just do it by consensus.
Sure.
Yep.
But tell him we were disappointed that he didn't make the long trip over.
Disappointment. Okay. Okay. Now we are on to the sand shed update. Everybody's favorite topic. So there was a meeting with myself, Glenn, and Sandy with Tim Dahl of Debois and King on design-build, bid-build options for the sand shed. The conversation was about distributing their existing request for proposal to large contractors like Russell Construction, Naylor Breen, and Neatly and Chase in order to obtain comparison prices to the Breadloaf bid. So Glenn, do you want to explain what Tim sort of laid out for us?
Sure.
There's two types of RFPs.
Yeah. I mean, he said the options were basically you can hire a company, an engineering company, to do the design and get all the permits and everything and get you all set up to do a bid. And then put the job out to bid with a very detailed RFP. This is exactly what we wanted.
And that's the traditional process. Now, that process means it takes longer to get the money. Because basically, you've got two steps. First step is with the engineer. Then the second step is actually putting it out to bid the project to the voters after you get the bids in from this very detailed design. The pro of that process is that you get exactly what you want. Because you've got a very detailed plan. Yes. And everyone's bidding on exactly the same thing. The second is actually what we've been doing. The bid that Mark Tessia wrote up for us, very loose. So it puts all that work of getting the specs and doing the permits and getting all the specs, getting everything all together on the contractor themselves. Okay? So when we saw, or actually, I never saw it. When you saw Breadloaf's bid, that's what they were giving you. They were giving you number two, which is the design-build process of doing an RFP. Where you write a very loose RFP. We want a building of this size to hold sand and salt. Very loose.
Yeah.
And then it's on them to put all those things together.
Make a proposal. Propose a design and everything.
They sort of do it all. And when they, when they present, when they go ahead and present their bid, then you get a bid like Breadloaf's, where everything is included, including the designing process. So the pro to that approach is you basically know your figure. And you can get a figure quickly to give to voters if you want to get it on a ballot in an expedited fashion. However, what they think you want might be different amongst themselves. Might get slightly different. And then...
As we did.
Yeah.
Yes. And then you have to work out the details as the build is happening. So it's good to have a project manager, which Tim told us you can hire. There are people out there who do project managing. And you could hire someone to oversee the project as it's going. So things never get too far out of whack. Of course, you're talking a project manager, which is another cost on top of it. So from what we need to do, we want to decide, do we want, since we started down process two without knowing we were, do we want to go and contact a few of these people that didn't put in bids to us? Some of those big companies like Russell, like Naylor Breen, like Neatly and Chase, along with Breadloaf? So we have a comparison. Just know the cost will be more, but sort of like you're paying for all of it in one shot. And we would know what that price is to bid out a bond to the voters.
And one thing that is interesting that he said was that work is not too plentiful right now for these companies.
Yeah.
And he said like, no one has work lined up for March. So he thought it would be, even make sense to go back to Breadloaf.
And say...
And say, "We're putting the project out."
We didn't get comparable bids. We're going, we're putting this process back out again so we can get some comparison. They might decide to change their figure when we, when they know what we're looking for.
That's a competitive bid.
Yeah.
Yeah. A couple of other things he said, sort of technically, which I hadn't heard before. So we've talked about a metal shed.
Yeah.
And it talked about how it's not a great place to keep salt because salt will corrode the metal.
I know.
I think Phil or someone said they were gonna build like a wooden enclosure for that. He also said that there's salt in the sand.
I bet there is.
And that can also corrode the metal. So he was an advocate of these...
Concrete walls.
Concrete walls, like these 12-foot-high concrete walls.
Like Breadloaf.
Exactly.
But I know that when you, we got the short email from Anthony Fajory, is that his?
Yes, yes.
He said four-foot wall sounded okay to him. And he thought a steel shed would be okay for sand, so...
I also mentioned that today to Phil when he called and said he couldn't make it. I said that Tim was not in favor of the metal. And he said nearly every one of VTRN's buildings are metal.
Really? I was, because I, you know, engineers can sometimes over-engineer things.
Yes.
Being an engineer myself.
And it might be because Debois and King does the same kind of work. Of course, they're gonna sort of say, on the concrete. But, so for next steps, it seems that we can take one of two tacks. We can either investigate how we're going already a little bit more and reach out to some of these other companies?
We need to find out where we're gonna get the money. And I think we're gonna have to...
Well, to get the money, we're gonna be asking for the voters to pass a bond.
Yeah.
A 30-year bond in order to do this.
I think we just need a real specific...
What we need is...
Consider what we're doing.
Yes. So what's the board's pleasure here?
So how do we ask for a bond if we don't know what we're getting?
Well, we can't ask for a bond until we have a price.
Yeah.
So the question is, do we want to go out and go down the route of Breadloaf? Continue with the RFP we have? Ask a few more companies for competitive bids and then see what we get? Or do we want to find out the cost of getting an engineer to come up with that detailed plan with us? With the permitting and all that? Put out a, put down, put out a proposal to voters on that? Get that work done? And then when we're done with that, then go ahead and bond out, get, put out a bond? It's gonna be a longer process. We will not be able to put out for the project for March.
Will the sand shed fall down?
No.
So far, it's been standing up through some sort of high hopes, glue, whatever it is that's keeping it up. And I'm thinking...
For 30 years.
Yes, but...
Telephone poles, rafters and...
That's the key right there.
Yeah. Telephone poles, rafters.
So, so, yeah.
Great assumptions.
And that was...
Right. So we're hoping to...
I was on the board when they built that. And we didn't go out to any bond. I didn't...
And you wouldn't need an engineer for that.
Yeah. We put between the lines and put the poles in. Got the rafters, put them up.
Right. But if we put something in that's really structurally sound, it's gonna last for that much longer.
All much longer.
We won't be talking 30 years. We're gonna be talking lifetimes.
Do what they did, make it a little heavier and it'll be all set up.
And higher.
The nice thing about getting this, is the metal building, you don't have trusses. So you can, so you can go right up to the roof with the sand.
Like, every one of those trusses is broken.
More.
Right.
Salt and metal, really.
Yeah, salt and metal.
Yeah. Yeah, well, they, they do a separate like wood enclosure for the salt.
You do part of it with the wood on the base, the bottom.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but our sand has salt mixed in it.
But it's not going to be anything with seals.
I think we, we mix it.
We do mix it.
That's why we have the so, salt separate.
Yeah.
We mix it. But we mix it when we're putting it in, when we're putting it up, so.
Right.
And whatever we do, there will be some concrete walls.
Yes.
Around the edge, but we don't know how high they're going to be yet.
Right.
It doesn't dispute among the engineers on how, on that.
Right.
It's expensive, concrete's very expensive.
Well, yes.
It gets, uh, it doubles every year.
And steel.
So I sort of favor the idea of getting more bids, um, with our sort of looser RFP because I think we get more ideas that way. Whereas if we get, if we hire an engineering firm to do the design and everything, we have that engineering firm's vision of what our sand shed should be.
Yeah, one idea.
That's true. And these companies, Russell, Naylor Breen, Neatley and Chase, they're excellent. If we decide to go with any one of them, including Bread Loaf, we will get a structure that is going to last eons past what we have right now.
Also pre-engineered, so the engineering doesn't have to be done because it comes with, with, like an erector set.
Directions, you mean?
Huh?
It comes with directions.
Well, they, they, they design it and they put it in.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's a way to sort of send the signal with that RFP that we don't, we don't need something that's like so overbuilt.
No.
You know, like I, I realize they're engineers, they need to design it, but we have, we've had one engineer said four-foot walls are fine. Another one said, I want 14-foot walls and so, um.
Split the difference.
Well, I think that's one reason why, why we would like more bids rather than less because then we're going to get more variety in what we can choose from. Okay, so are we, are we in favor of reaching out to these others?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm already brooding about the marketing. I mean, that's what it is. How do we sell this to voters so they understand that it's compelling?
Tell them that they don't have any choice.
The few people I've talked to say sand shed, I know you've been talking about the sand shed, but what's a sand shed?
Yeah.
You know, they don't.
Well, we have pictures and we have the report on how the structure has been failing now for the past at least five years, if not longer.
Tim.
Yeah, we've got two engineers' reports saying it's an imminent.
Imminent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't believe them.
So that's why we're moving on this because it's really important.
But I think it's your point. We need to make a pretty coherent case. This is why it needs to be replaced. This is why we need to do it this way.
And I think it's been out of people's, you know, it's been talked about and talked about so much with not action happening on it, that people sort of forget. So I think we need to bring those pictures back up and show those reports again, make them public and.
Some, some towns don't have any san, sand shed. They just stockpile it right there, let the rain go on it and, uh, they can't afford it, but the, the thing is it preserves, you know, it doesn't get under the snow. It makes it, it gets, doesn't get frozen. It makes it so you can.
The water content is, yeah.
It's certainly nicer for the guys who have to use it.
You don't have to sell it to me. Well, I mean, it's just.
That's how I'm going to sell it to them.
Ambassadors to recruiting votes for. Replacing the sand shed outside of the meeting.
We're going to do such a good job, there's not going to be any questions.
Unanimous.
People are just going to say, oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So now our next, um, item is the local hazardous mitigation plan update. Did everybody get a chance to look this over?
I did.
Okay.
Yep.
So I had a question, um, if we paid out of our own pocket upfront to get this report updated, can we get reimbursed with a grant or is it?
Hmm, no.
No?
No.
So if you pay without our pocket.
It's, that's, that's it.
It's done.
And the only way this is going to impact us is if we have like a major, federal disaster between now and the time we update it.
Right.
Okay.
If there's an expiration and then if FEMA is liable and pays us. There's just a lot of ifs. Whether, you know, we could have a disaster be next week and we don't have really a FEMA money.
Yeah, right. But this, it looks like our plan expires in March.
Yeah, at the beginning of March.
Yeah.
So we're on the hook for if something happened, we'd have to pay more money.
Yes.
Right.
Until we get it updated.
Right.
If you paid out of pocket right now, you know, it's going to be $10,000 or $12,000 out of pocket.
Right.
Yes.
You know, we have dry weather until next.
Right, right.
Next December, so, you know, I just.
But we could put it in the budget for next year and then also apply for a grant and.
We, we should know by December.
By December?
Okay.
If grant gets approved and if it doesn't, we'll just budget for it.
Okay, okay.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yeah, yeah. So you're going to go for that, the, um.
That's what I think we ought to do. Just go for the grant. We should know by December whether we get it or not. If we don't get it, we'll put it in the budget.
Okay.
Oh, is that, that MPG, that municipal?
Does that sound good to you?
Yeah, they, they, she wasn't, when I was talking to Maggie about all of this, I sent her that municipal planning grant. And said, can we apply for this? Because they, usually that's no. That's usually what we use to update the town plan and she made some calls and came out back to me and said, yeah, I'm pretty sure we could use it for that. Because we go like the climate change thing in there, so. And then I checked with Erica because we're also updating the town plan to make sure she hadn't planned it because we can only put in one application.
Okay.
And Erica said, no, we're not going to use it, so I think, I think we should do it for as a news communication.
Okay. So are we all good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, our next item, delinquent tax collector and lister clerk resignations. Um, Jill has submitted her resignation from the delinquent tax collector and lister data collection posts. It's effective on September 30th. Do we accept her resignations?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And so shall Sandy post those jobs for two weeks?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. I know Julie Sharon is interested in the delinquent tax collector position. Um, whoever you appoint will serve until town meeting in March. And then, um, run for the remaining two years of three-year term. So this appointment is just until March.
Right.
Okay. Uh, data clerk is also an appointed, um, position. And Jill will provide training since she's done that job. The new assistant town clerk treasurer, Kim Sharp, is interested. And will be posted as well.
Do we appoint the delinquent tax collector and the data clerk?
Yes.
That's not Jill, that's us.
We, we appoint it because it's interim until the March election.
Okay.
Okay, great. Moving on, October meeting schedule. Sandy will not be with us from October 14th to 23rd. That means seven more days. Do we want to reschedule the October 20th meeting to October 27th? Or just hold one meeting that month?
Oh.
You're not supposed to show you're so excited about this, Rob.
Dambie does it. It seems we have one meeting a month, but we have more stuff to do.
I think it would be kind of silly to meet on October 27th and then the next, then the next week also, November 3rd as well.
I think, I think the one thing that's.
Well, we would meet on the 6th and the 27th.
Right, but I'm saying, but I'm saying if we met on the 27th, then we're also meeting on the 3rd.
Exactly.
It's like a week later.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm kind of, I mean.
So do you think one meeting for the month of October?
I think that's okay. It's my vote.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the only thing we're doing, uh, pay orders won't go out, but that's.
We're not doing our budget meetings yet.
No.
No, but I mean, with the pay orders.
Regular pay orders.
We only have one issue, pay orders for the month.
Is that going to disrupt anything?
I don't think so. And I do, I was just reading that, I was, I'm going to check into before the October 6th meeting. I think that you can name one person on the select board to sign pay orders when there's a reason to like that, so maybe between those two meetings.
You think it would be an issue?
Point one of you to just go through and sign the pay orders.
I don't know, whose check will be holding up?
I'll get the information about signing pay orders.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Designate the chair or something.
Right, right, because they do that, yeah.
Okay.
A lot of select boards do that.
Okay, so it looks like we will have one meeting for the month of October on October 6th.
So, uh, do we need to, uh, make a motion about that?
No, we could just.
Huh?
We can do it by consensus.
Or just do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Agenda building.
Oh. Were we discussed the clock?
Yep.
Yes.
Now.
Forward.
There's two policies that, um, Sandy has on the October 6th agenda along with the sinking fund and the town hall clock.
Yeah, I think the town hall, we'll do an update on the clock, hopefully and see where we're at now.
Is it, um, this may just, I don't know, it's just me. My wife had the same impression, the sinking fund, the name. I didn't know what that, I never, wasn't familiar with that name.
I never heard of it either.
And it has, it has sort of.
There's actually the difference between a sinking fund and, I think what you're talking about is a reserve fund, so I'm going to give, bring you information for both.
Okay.
You're actually talking about a reserve fund. A sinking fund is to pay off debt.
Right, I understand that now. I looked it up, but it was like, we both had sort of this like negative connotation, like it's money you just throw in there and it just.
A sinkhole.
Like a sinkhole, yeah.
Gotcha, yeah.
It's not a great name, but.
It isn't. It's more of a reserve fund, like we have the reserve fund and full reserve, so.
So yes, and reserve fund sounds nicer too. So Sandy's going to bring information for us and we can have a discussion on October 6th.
Currently is when you raise, when you raise money with debt.
Yes.
And then when you pay it off, you sink your debt.
You sink your debt.
It's just, it's, I was, I agree. I was researching both and it's, it's a weird concept.
Yeah. Okay. Select board comments, concerns?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, I'm thinking the crosswalk. Did you, I think, uh, there's a place right by the Citgo, uh, right in front of the Trino home that used to have a crosswalk there and, uh.
The state has.
This, this.
The state says.
The state says we can do it, but we have to jump through the hoops. We've got to get it.
Exactly.
1-1-1, section 1-1-1-1, but I've seen that, it's the same thing for trees. And, uh, I don't believe they're going to make you survey, but maybe they did, maybe we have to do that. But I don't see this, they have matching funds you could apply for up to $75,000.
Right, for, for this crosswalk?
This is, uh, you know, just paying some stress.
A 50-50 fund?
And put the, and put the, put the signs up.
Either sign, yeah.
That, that, to slow the traffic down because they, they stop there and then psh, there, then.
Do we need a, is a sign with a light on it?
Huh?
Is there a sign with a light, like where you press a button and the lights flash so you can cross?
That's, that's, uh, no, this wouldn't need that. No, this is, when, we have a crosswalk there, but it's down by the Citgo.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, that's a quarter of a mile.
You've got people like in wheelchairs and walkers going across.
And, and I talked to the, to the girl who works there and said, many people have almost gotten hit out there. She said, I'll buy you the paint and I, and I just think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good, I just wonder if just the painted crosswalk is enough when you.
No, no, you have these signs.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, but either signs, but they, do they, do they have?
These, this.
We used to have them where you ju, it was just a, you just press a button and the lights flash for like a minute.
They have them in New England where you, you go to the crosswalk, you have a button like, like at the, at the main intersection. You press a button and the light flashes.
Right.
And then, um, you cross.
Right.
Um, and then the cars have to stop because they see the flashing lights and everything in order to be able to.
So it's not like a real traffic light, but it's just something that goes on for a minute while you cross.
But I wonder if to do that, if we have a whole process we have to do to do that.
I'm not thinking we need to think of the lights. I'm, I'm just saying, right in front of, uh, right on Hillside, there's, there's a crosswalk. It's got a yellow triangular thing with a person walking there. And then right below, it's got an arrow.
That one's.
And that's, and that's a law that you have to stop.
Right.
It's a law and it's everywhere in the state, not just Wiltonford, but.
Now, is there a difference?
This would be something that's exactly like.
Is there a difference between the Hillside Crosswalk and what they're proposing with the one by the Citgo Station? Is it because one's existing and one isn't?
Right, right.
So the difference is that Hillside's crosswalk exists.
Oh, it is?
Yes, so the state will maintain it because it's there.
No, how, oh, you mean, you mean, uh, streetlights?
No, 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 I'm talking about the crosswalk at Hillside is already established there. So because it's there, we don't have to go through the process that we would to put one in that does not exist.
Well, I know. I think that's fine. I think we should do it. Yeah, I think we should do it.
I think we should look into it.
Nate, can we look into what the process is going to be?
I know we have.
We did it, remember recently we did that and then I, then Ethan Peppin from Rockland Regional Planning said that there's a grant that comes out next July.
Okay.
And he said, I think that there was a number of places on Route 7 that they could use crosswalks and there's a grant, like he said, of $75,000, it's a 50-50. But, you know, you, there are surveys and hoops you have to jump.
There will be, there'll be surveys that will have to be.
Traffic study.
Right, it's going to be.
They, what you said, rules is a narrative. They really need more information and they have to say what stores are there, how many people live.
Remember there was somebody at that meeting that said there was a.
You have, might have to actually watch and count how many people cross.
So I think what we're going to do is we're going to look into what it's going to do to go through all this.
Well, Rob was in my office today.
I, I, if you, if you let me, I'll call the guy.
Okay.
Rob was in my office today and asked me about, so I forwarded him all the email from the trans guy.
The person at the state who has it.
And then on all the details about the crosswalk.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do a, do a narrative and a, and a, and map.
Rob, we might need a step above just the painted crosswalk because.
Except what?
A special population is using that. They would use it. So you've got wheelchairs, walkers.
They won't let us do it without handicapped accessible.
No, I'm talking about lights and.
Because of the time it takes for people to cross there. And I think if we're going to go this route, then we should look into the flashing lights one.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll ask him if we can do it. I'm, I'd be happy just with the sign.
Great.
That's better than nothing.
So Rob, you're going to look into it.
I think a lot of it is for like people like at Emmy's place and stuff like that. They're going to, they're just, they, they've got walkers or wheelchairs.
You have funerals in the whole side, both sides of the road will be, and you have weddings at the church and both sides of the road will be there.
Yeah.
And then you have the people who walk to the store, who live there. And, uh, the people are used, it's, it's a calming effect. It calms the traffic, you know? Oh, I got to wash up for, you know, everybody knows you, you get arrested if you go, if you, if you. You give somebody the crosswalk.
So we will, another part of our work next year is to possibly apply for this grant.
There we go. So it can be, you're going to look into it.
Yeah.
But it seems like we might go ahead and look into applying for this grant next year.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Upcoming July.
Oh, yeah. No, um, you know, it's been, hasn't been there for 20 years, but there was a crosswalk there. There was a crosswalk there and it would have to have been put there by the state.
Yeah, unfortunately disappeared and now got to go through all this.
No, uh, they're going to hold their feet to the fire.
Okay. Sounds good, Rob. So now, any other comments, concerns? Other business, um, there's an email in our package from Jill from Eland City for, um, an extended warranty on our flashing radar signs at 300 a pop. Um, no action needed if we don't want the extended warranty. There's been no issues with them. The, um, sign on School Street, we got about a decade ago with no issues and no extended warranty. Uh, my vote is no extended warranty.
I agree with you.
Right, no extended warranty.
No.
All right.
Good enough.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Oh, we're that far?
We are that far.
Move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I have a second now.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning the meeting?
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned.